So Jordan or Hector, I'm not sure if you see the mayor in the, among the attendees. Oh. And there she is. Thank you, everybody. I think I came into the wrong Zoom link. Um. All right. Is everybody here that's gonna be here, right? I think I heard that Jason was probably uh out of pocket for this meeting? Okay. Um, so with that, let's go ahead and call the June thirteenth to our regular meeting at six oh two to order. Roll call, please.
Uh, board member Ponemirov.
Here.
Board member Greider.
Here.
Board member Pastizo.
Here.
Board member Byers.
Here.
Board member Parla Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Clark. Board Member Clark. It's uh Chair Arisled.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. The first item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda item. Are there any speaker request forms?
Uh, as of five o'clock this afternoon, there were no speaker requests.
All right. Any speaker request forms in the audience? Seeing none? We'll move on to item three, which is the consent calendar. Has it, everybody had a chance to review the consent calendar? Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion. Uh, member Perry Miller.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Boy, we're on, we're back on Zoom again. So Hector, would you prefer a roll call for the record?
Leave it up to the board. I can keep track of, of the ayes and the nays.
Okay, so I didn't hear any nays. Uh, motion carries. Item four point one is budget hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Staff?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys all hear me? Okay, great. On a new computer today. Um, well, thank you. We are in budgeting season. And so we are hosting tonight our public hearing about the talent urban renewal proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And I apologize for the dizziness. I am scrolling down to what that budget looks like. Um, so this budget this year, it really focuses, um, it's a one million eight hundred and eighty thousand proposed budget. And it's really focusing on some key projects, the main one being the um gateway transitional housing program and the full development of the gateway site to its permanent development. Um, grant programs for our local businesses. Keeping the door open for any potential property acquisition that might help spur development downtown. Um, as well as placing money, uh probably for our town hall renovations, which has been a priority of the urban renewal for the last few years. Um, so this budget really focuses on uh accomplishing those tasks this coming year. And I look forward to um any comments from the committee members or the community about the proposal. Uh, Mayor, I believe you're on mute.
I, it's tough to get back in the groove after uh live meetings. Wow. Um, all right. So with that, are there any uh questions of staff? From members? All right, seeing none. Uh, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do I, am I working off a script tonight?
Um, I apologize, Mayor, with the transition with the computer. It's just the words opening a public hearing at six oh seven PM is good enough.
Gonna make it easy. Uh, opening the public hearing at six oh seven PM. Are there any speaker request forms?
There are none.
Any speakers from the audience? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and close this public hearing at six oh seven. Um. And uh is there any discussion before we entertain a motion? Discussion that Dave Lohman describes as not to be confused with deliberation, but there is a point for discussion here. All right, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, or sorry, Prime Minister, I will offer one clarification.
Okay.
We can have a motion if the, any committee member or board member would like to recommend a change to the budget. Or we can consider a resolution that would officially adopt the budget for this coming year.
So would the resolution be presented at the next meeting?
And I'll get to that resolution here.
Okay, so is, let me, hang on, let me get to my agenda. It's hard, uh, it's hard for me to follow both the agenda and the package. So one second. Oh, I see it. Okay. Great. So uh I would entertain a motion of any amendments if or any changes. Seeing none. We'll move on then to item five point one. Jordan, am I tracking so far?
Yes.
Yep. So item five point one is consideration of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four budget resolution twenty-three dash two. Staff report, please.
Yes, so this is the resolution that formally adopts the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget as approved by the budget committee. Um, it can be adopted by just resolution number only. Um, and this is what we will go ahead and file with the Secretary of State and move forward with entering July one as our new fiscal year.
Any questions of staff? All right, are there any speaker request forms on this item?
There are none.
All right, seeing none. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Member Byers.
I move to adopt the proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
There a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ponamor?
I'd love to make a decision. Oh, I, I was just gonna ask whether we need to say resolution twenty-three dash two in there? Just a process question.
We do need to adopt by resolution.
Absolutely. So I adapt, I move to adopt a resolution twenty-three dash two. Uh, the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
And I'll still second that.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-three dash two, a resolution for fiscal year uh for adopting but the budget in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Ponemirov.
Yes.
Board Member Greider.
Yes.
Board Member Pastizo.
Yes.
Board Member Byers.
Yes.
And Board Member Parla Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is um consideration of the revitalization grant. Steph, staff report?
Yes, so the um Urban Renewal Agency has opened up our revitalization grant program. This is a grant program that can grant businesses or commercial properties up to fifteen thousand dollars to make property improvements as long as they're within the Urban Renewal District and meet certain eligibility criteria. Um, really, the focus of this grant is to visually improve storefronts and street gates, increase access to businesses or their location, help that business or location better support public health and safety, and address any impact in the Almita fire that the biz- business or property may have had. Um, we did receive our first application. Um, before I come to that, I do wanna give a quick shout out and thank you. Talent Business Alliance um is the one marketing this program for us. And so I wanna thank the hard work that they're doing um to get the word out there so we can get money in businesses' hands. So the application before you all tonight is an application from Gather Cafe. Um, Gather Cafe is really sprucing up their building. They're looking to paint the exterior of their building, install lit signage. They like a water feature outside, um lighting outside, adding sun sails inside crypt on their patio, and building landscape planters for irrigation. They have begun some of the work already. You guys might see they're really great looking uh wood landscape planters that are uh onsite right now on their patio. So just to show you, since this is our first one, that I wanna walk you through just the staff review and recommendation. First off, this applicant has, is eligible to receive grant funds, and the project they've named is eligible as well. And then looking at the grant priorities, this application does address the priorities. Um, it does visually improve the storefront or streetscape by adding landscaping and um repainting the building. The wayfinding signage is providing better access for folks to be able to find their location. It encourages outdoor patio use, which we know is a public health improvement in our world of COVID. Um, and they did lose landscape and had some damaged paint from the fire, so this does address those issues. Um, so staff recommendation is to grant Gather Cafe Bistro and Bar the maximum award amount of fifteen thousand dollars per property. Um, their request is coming in slightly above eighteen thousand, um, and so this can help make sure those projects get done.
Great. Um, Jordan, I just wonder if I can just uh add that really this isn't um, uh, this isn't a start of the program, but it's a restart from a previous. I, I think it had a few little modifications. We added some language that allowed um fire damage to be a part of this um revitalization grant, but I just wanna say for the record that this is a program that was in place for as long as I can remember with the Urban Renewal Agency. We just revived, we just re- started it after about two or three years being dormant. Um. All right, are there any questions or comments about this application? Counselor Pastizo?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do we know what kind of a lit sign? Are they, they talking about neon lights or just like lighting a sign?
Yeah, so they will have to um abide by our sign ordinance. So receiving the funds, if granted, is it gonna be contingent on having a permit for that sign? Um, and I cannot tell you off the top of my head what those requirements are, but I do believe neon is not permissible in their location. Um, but we do have a science standard that they will be asked to follow.
Okay, thanks.
So um if they don't qualify for the signage that they're looking for, will, will that adjust their ask?
Um, that can.
Um, so I, I, so here's um what feels a little awkward to even say, but um, are we making a decision based on the potential that this amount could change? Or do we know that what they're asking for at this point in time? They had a pre, pre uh application meeting with uh Community Development. Is that correct?
They uh did review. So if you see down here below, their request was reviewed by Community Development. And Community Development has identified that they need to get a permit for that signage before they can install.
Um, so I'm not sure if that, um, I, I, I may be confused, Jordan. Does that answer the question whether or not we know that the, their, their budget amount would be thirty-six eighty-seven, thirty-three? Like, um, is that subject to change?
And I thought I'm having a hard time hearing on this computer. So the way that works though, if the board grants fifteen thousand dollars in grant funds to Gather Cafe Bistro under this program, what'll happen is I will uh have a grant agreement that we sign together that details um their requirements and what projects is eligible for the refund. And this is a reimbursement grant, so they will have to provide us receipts that we reimburse. And so if uh Gather, so in their actual document grant agreement, it'll say, you know, we'll be required to have a sign permit for the sign receipts to be reimbursed. If Gather does not move forward with that portion of their request, they will not be reimbursed that amount.
Okay, based on their ability to get a permit is what you're saying?
Yeah, or inability. Decide, you know, I totally don't wanna do it now. That's okay, but we just will not reimburse for projects not completed.
Okay, I uh thank you. That, that explains, um, that, that really explains my question. I really appreciate it. Thanks. Um, member Byers?
Thank you. To that point, just doing some quick mental math based on their total request, which is more than fifteen thousand dollars. Subtracting the amount of the signage, if that permit isn't um uh approved, in their budget, their overall costs are still over fifteen thousand dollars. So it it, am I correct? I'm just like checking my numbers here. So am I correct to infer that should we grant them the full fifteen thousand dollars? Um, it would still be totally usable for other projects that are outlined in their application.
In this request, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? But just out of curiosity for other grants, um because this is the first of what I hope will be a, a, a good use in our community. Um. In the event that they aren't reimbursed and the amount falls smaller, uh, and ends up being less than what they've asked for, the, the additional amount literally will just roll back into um, the fund, and if they wanna add a, add a project or something, does it come back before us? Is that how that would work? Or, or could they do that over the counter?
Yes. So they, so the way it'll work is, say they've requested up to fifteen thousand funds and projects, they only end up doing seven thousand. They can come back and have a new application request for the remaining eighteen, eight thousand for that property. Um, or if there's a business out there that can only think of maybe a five thousand project they really wanna do right now, they can apply for that right now. And then come back in the future to apply for more. Um, the, the, the benchmark we're having is just fifteen thousand dollars per property. And that can add up through various applications. It does not have to be a single application.
Okay. Um, okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Jordan. Um. If there aren't any, are there any speaker request forms on this item?
There are none.
I'll entertain a motion. Uh, member Byers.
I move to award Gather Cafe and Bistro fifteen thousand dollars in revitalization grant program funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award Gather Cafe and Bistro fifteen thousand dollars in revitalization grant program funds. Is there uh any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Board Member Greider.
Yes.
Board Member Pastizo.
Yes.
Board Member Byers.
Yes.
Board Member Parla Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm getting back to my sorry for being so fragmented tonight, y'all. I drove twelve hours last night and got in really late. I'm still trying to recover from it. Um, but had a great time, so it was worth it. Um, the next item on the agenda is um updating on, an update on the Gateway Transitional Housing Program. Staff?
Yes, thank you. Um, just wanna provide our monthly update on that program and how it's going. Um, as of last week, fifty of the fifty-three travel trailers were occupied, and there are currently about thirty fire impacting households that are on the waitlist for transitional housing. And that transitional housing may include the gateway site, or it may include other transitional housing that access is helping locate people in. Um, the really big news and the good, the good news is that the state has approved the proposed disposition plan that the agency um submitted to the state. And the disposition plan is what do we do with the trailers when the program is done, when we're done housing uh Almita fire victims? And so I'm gonna go ahead and show you all that plan. Oh, I forgot to add it in. I apologize all. Um. The first priority is that the RVs um could be granted or sold to the folks who are living in them. Um, so say there is a family that's moving um off-site, they have a location and they have the ability to hook up an RV. They would be eligible to work with access in the agency um to take title, to take ownership of that travel trailer and move it off property. Um, the next eligible priority for disposing of travel trailers is that we are able to donate those travel trailers to a transitional housing provider. Um, for example, Rogue Retreat, they do expect to open up another transitional housing service specific to families in about a year, year and a half. Um, and they would be interested in potentially using these travel trailers as part of their program. Um, the third priority that we have, and this really starts focusing on inhabitable travel trailers and or travel trailers that um are not wanted to be received as a donation. And that would be gifting um one or more to Jackson County Fire Strick Five for them to practice their uh safety response to travel trailers as part of their training program. The fourth priority is to uh donate them to a school or education program that has a shop class that may benefit from working on them, trying to get them back into a habitable state, et cetera. And then lastly, we're allowed to dispose of them if all else fails uh through uh paying a decommission fee. So having someone come out and actually disassemble the RV for uh recycling and uh removing from the site.
Can I ask a question? Um, be somewhere between uh the shop class and, and decommissioning, is there an opportunity to offer um sur- surpassing? Any of them?
Surplusing? Yeah, so the state, the state did not want us to sell or financially benefit from the travel trailers as an organization. Uh, we could always write a letter to the state requesting that if it comes to it. Um, but my hope is that we can get a lot of these travel trailers in use by some of the residents that can really benefit them. Uh, there's only a few remaining that we have to uh uh disposition in other ways.
I guess what I, the reason I'm thinking of that point is because I think the priorities up to that point are, are spot on. Um, you know, if there's any that are unusable, um donate them for training. If there is any that can be um repaired or restored, donate them for a class. Um, and I just would hate to put them in the landfill if somebody could if we could surplus them, donate the money to you know, one of these other priorities in some way and um and not, and, and not dispose of them. Um, and let them get surplus if that was a priority above dismantling them, because I know that there's not much recyclable on, on the um, so uh, it would be, I, I I would just ask that we ask about that, that we inquire about that and see if that is a, a priority that we can squeeze in just above sending them to the uh, to the dismantlers.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback, and I can reach out to the state on that.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Is there any questions on this? Uh, Counselor Ponamor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm wondering for the training exercises, is it based on, you know, uh, is the fire district planning on just setting them ablaze? Or using them in training like practicing getting people out? Um. And the reason I'm asking is it just, it just seems uh it would seem if, if it were, if they were gonna be burned up in all the toxic smoke that would go with that. Um, it might be better to prioritize for number four over number three uh for educational uses. Um, so that, that was my question.
Yeah, so it really is uh the fire district's determination how they wanna use them for training. Um, I know it came up as a priority, largely because we have so many more families that are living in travel trailers as their main source um of housing. And so the more experience we can give to our first responders about how to appropriately and safely respond in those situations, uh, the benefit for that. Um, I would have to ask the fire district exactly what details and how they wanna use it. Though I do know in their training, they're very aware of the smoke they're putting out in the world, um particularly because it's their fire folk who are most exposed being onsite in that training scenario.
Thank you, Jordan. That clarifies things for me.
But also you said that they, that it, it would be limited to like one or two units, right? So we're not sending six out there to catch on fire, right?
Yeah, I would assume that the, the interest when I've talked to them historically is, you know, in, in a couple. We're not looking at any large scale uh for training.
Hopefully, they're all still in good shape. I mean, it's uh except a few, you know, I'm uh, I anyway, um any other questions or comments? I appreciate that you brought that up, Counselor Ponamor, because they do, they do burn up some pretty black smoke. I don't know uh about the newer ones, but boy, you've ever seen an older one burn. It's horrific. Um. All right, Jordan. Thank you so much for that report. Glad to hear it. Next item on the agenda is an update on two oh two East Main Street. Staff?
So the agency was interested in making offers on the house at two oh two East Main Street. This is that white historic home that's in between Town Hall and City Hall. Ultimately, that property was sold to a different party. Um, it was sold to a young couple who is looking to renovate the home to be able to uh host a bed and breakfast out of it. Um, I don't know if you've seen them working, but they've been working days and nights, uh, I know, cleaning it out. Um, one of the, the reasons that, you know, talking to the real estate agent of why uh Tura's offers were not accepted was largely due to uh the interest in the property owner to try to preserve the home. And we're recognizing that, you know, Tura would not have a a lot of ability to refurbish and rebuild that home that we would likely need to remove it uh for the safety and use of that property. Um, I just wanna share that with you all. This was a specific request from Member Clark um to be able to have a discussion around this, and so we can also save this for when he's back. But wanted to just open it up for any questions and that you know where it's at.
So are you saying that you'll um, you'll move this discussion item over to another agenda uh for when Counselor Clark is back? Is that what I understood?
That we could do that, um, or we could ask him to bring it up at a future agenda item if he would like to continue to discuss it.
I think uh, that's a, that's a good idea. So does anybody have any comments or questions about this now? I know, I, I, I know that uh he's, he and I have discussed it quite a bit, and I would have asked some of the questions that I know he had, but I'd rather wait if you, if we're, if we're all willing to bring this up at a future agenda. Um. So with that, I'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is items from the board or the chair. Um, I do have a couple of uh requests. One is that um, we have a great deal of real estate assets in our um, in our holdings, and I would like uh for us to get those assessed if we can. Um, even if it's just a you know, a, a market study or, or something along those lines. Um, even if it's just a, you know, a, a market study or, or something along those lines, but to, to uh find out what. Uh, what's the value of our, of our total assets? We have cash assets and, and uh, and we have our real estate assets and just to understand what the total value of our assets are. Um, so I would ask for the consent of the council of the members for that. Does anybody object to that? Uh, Jordan, do you need any more direction than consent of the members? Okay, um, and. Uh, does anybody else have anything? Oh, I did want to ask, um, is this a good question? Just a time to just ask some general questions, Jordan?
Of course.
And I, I was disappointed that I was out of town when Tom Humphrey joined our conversations. Uh, and I haven't had a chance to listen to that meeting, unfortunately, but I will get to it. Um, I just want to find out, um, is there a. Do you know where he's at in the work that he's doing? And uh, is there anything you can tell us? Uh, I, I, I did not give you an opportunity to prepare for this. I didn't tell you I was gonna ask about this, but I didn't think about it, but um, so whatever you've got is fine.
Yeah, so Tom is right now working on the actual drafting of the RFP to go out for permanent development. Um, he is still looking for potential bidders on that RFP to just get their interest and get a sense so that we know who to market it to. Um, but his focus, focus right now is drafting. Um, I will say, uh, he's been delayed because I have uh not gotten back to him on a couple of items just due to my capacity issues. But one of the topics he would like to do for his drafting is set up some individual meetings. Um, for example, with you, Chair, and like with you, Vice Chair, just to talk through to make sure that his representation of the vision. Is what is accurate with the community vision as has been shared over the course of years. Um, so do expect some kind of one-on-one follow-up emails from Tom and I to schedule those uh for the Chair and Vice Chair.
That's great. Um. I would imagine that he has um some good historic in his possession, right? Some good records about the, the community-led visions and some of the previous meetings that we've had. Um, would you, um, I, I suppose we can ask him when we email him that he um. Provide what he has so that we can, we can also make sure that he's got all of what we can remember. Um, and not, if not, we can do the research and find the records that, that might be germane. Uh, so there's some prep work, I think, that's, that's gonna need to happen for that discussion and, and uh. Uh, that, that would be the first discussion I'd want to have with Tom is just to make sure he has the full record of. Uh, or, you know, the, the relevant record of uh, of what the community, you know, envisioned in, in, in that process.
And I did provide Tom with all the records I could find in the files. Um, I think one of the difficult things is all staff members now uh don't have the history of that project. We just have the, the record as it's been filed away and stored. Um, but more than happy to have Tom share with you what he has and what he's produced so far so that you can assess if that's a, the full record or not.
Yeah, well, most of, most of that work um was done, uh, most of the community visiting work was done under Sandra and Zach. So the record, I know the record is whole from those days, right? That's my understanding and.
Yes.
Um, so that would be really what I would focus on. Um, as far as like the, you know, what, what the, what the community meeting, the town halls and the community charrettes came up with.
Okay, great. That is what we passed along, so I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah. Anybody else have any items? Anybody? I'm sorry, I got distracted. Um, all right. Uh, written communications, none? Uh, Jordan, do you have anything for the good of the order before I call this meeting adjourned?
Uh, no, just to remind folks that this will be the same Zoom link for our city council study session afterwards. Um, though I'm gonna go ahead and sign off so I can figure out some sound issues before we jump into that.
And then so we'll see everybody back at seven o'clock.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.